Time is now one fifteen, one fourteen. And a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of December seventh is called to order.
Liz.
And, of course, business needs to take its own course, but we did have a tentative goal that were in some of the invites to folks that we were shooting for two thirty, but let's, obviously, we need to do the people's business. So whatever that takes, it takes, but I'd give a context if we're able to. And the first item is approval of amendments of regular committee of the whole meeting. And by the way, that's my excuse for gaveling a little more than I typically do. Sorry about that.
I move approval of the minutes.
Support?
Moved by John, supported by Liz as a final minute act. Any discussion changes? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Bo, same? Great. Ms. Strauss, President's Report.
Thank you.
Bringing cash to the table now.
Well, again, a lot of what I was going to say in my President's Report this morning, so I'm not going to repeat it, but, and I, I want to give a, my term as President is ending me now, and I do not intend to seek reelection as President. I've been in a long time. And I want to give a, a report, but I don't want to, I didn't want to, I wanted today's meeting to focus on Eileen and Carol, and I'd like to give that report at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
That would be great.
So, I want to look back a little bit, and, sorry, you both did, but I want to look back a little bit more from when I started as President, which was a long time ago, and the goals I had then, and what we've been able to do, and, so, I look forward to doing that.
That would be great. We'll, we'll be sure to show that in the agenda.
Well, stay tuned.
She's going to keep it.
We'll stay tuned.
Oh.
We'll do a past President. Well, you actually, you'll be the President at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, I still am at the beginning.
Yeah, at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, we'll sneak it in then.
I thought I had determined it with this, this meeting.
Not yet.
No, you got to elect someone else, and I hear it's going to be close.
Okay.
Well, great, Kath, so we'll, but we can also do it later if you'd like, however, whatever feels appropriate to you.
But I want to, I want to thank everybody appropriately and all that.
Well, we've appreciated your.
I would like to say something about all your accomplishments, too, as you know.
Oh, well, thank you.
So, good?
So, that's, that's it today.
Okay. While Eileen's setting something up, I, I, I did want to mention just a few things, and I'll cut mine short. One is that, I don't know if I shared this with you, but being a New York kid, I ended up in a bit of a controversy in the New York Times, and it was, it was because at a meeting of my counterparts, or did we send this to you?
I think you did.
Oh, okay.
You did. Is that your colleague that?
Right. I just want to tell you it all worked out, because what I was worried about, it came out Thanksgiving Day, and that is that my counterparts were meeting at, I'm on the board of the so-called chiefs, chief school officials. And sitting next to me was the New York Commissioner, whose decision was to either waive or not waive.
Oh, right.
Now, he was, of course, he has a board, and he has regents, and he even has a super commissioner of some kind. So he had a lot of other, in theory, had a lot of other folks that were, had interests in this, but final analysis, it's called for that the Commissioner makes the call. And it was whether or not that Mayor Bloomberg's appointment was able to serve. And they worked out a compromise, so that controversy's over. But I got a little worried when Gene Willhoyd, if you know, he's the head of our association, I think had been head of, if not NASB, then maybe it was NAGB, years ago.
No.
And, and said he thinks I was in the middle of it. So the deal is just this simple, that I was kidding, and, not that I ever do that.
No.
But it was a private dinner, and I didn't expect someone to report it, and that was when David, who's the Commissioner in New York, he was born in New York, but his parents lived for an extended time in England, he had a very English accent, and I said, if you are gonna, no matter whether you approve or disapprove of this, this is getting wide national coverage, you don't want to report it with that English accent. You know, the bottom line is, in New York, you'll sound elite and all that. So I got behind him, and I picked him up kind of like a puppet. But, again, this is, and I said, I'll do the Brooklyn accent. You're, you're just telling me what to say, and well, blah, blah, blah. So it ends up in the last paragraph of this article, that I guess you have seen. But since then, everything smoothed out. I didn't want to be at odds with Mayor, Mayor Bloomberg. I like going back to my hometown once in a while, and that all, all got sorted out. And by the way, I think they did a good thing. They reached a compromise where.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. And I think he was able.
But he's not a puppet, or figurehead, the academic person.
Yeah.
So they kept this woman, the one they brought in?
Yeah. But she had to bring in an academic person also.
Oh, okay.
And they, I think, it's a very different situation. I mean, I don't, I'm glad it wasn't my call, but I don't know where I would have been, because part of it is, it really isn't a traditional superintendent's day. I mean, is it a million kids, and how many billion budget? Probably, maybe, maybe seven or eight billion, I would guess. So, I mean, I think there's room for thinking differently about who leads organizations like that. But I think it's also important that they keep the academics in mind, and that's, that's apparently the compromise they're, so anyway, you don't have to worry about.
It's very important to keep the academics.
Me being the problem on that count, anyway. And then the picture I want to show, this doesn't happen often, so I don't want to, you know, I don't want anyone to, Kathy's handing out twenties here, so.
She thinks she's in Chicago.
We're all in line here, her twenty dollars.
She thinks she's in Chicago.
We're buying votes over here.
She decided to run again.
I said, Kathy decided to run again.
Yeah, yeah.
Cheap votes here.
So maybe just one other thing. This was just something that, I happened to be invited to a dinner where two people were there last week, and, and at the event throughout the day, there were a few of us that were the so-called chiefs, and they rotated us, that you got to sit at kind of a head table, one at breakfast, one at lunch, and one at dinner. And I happened to get at this table, I forget, I guess it was the dinner, and got this shot, and I want to show you the shot, first of all, because, so, right at the dinner is Jeb Bush to the left, and that's Arnie Duncan right there. But the reason I wanted to show this is, is this is how Arnie Duncan was showing how he gave President Obama those stitches on his lips.
How he did President Obama.
Not really.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, he got the stitches from playing basketball.
Oh, the stitches, oh, yeah.
And he normally, they blamed Duncan originally, I don't know if you saw this in the news, because they often play one-on-one.
Yeah.
And they're both pretty good players, but that's not actually what he was doing.
Yeah. Nice try.
But it was, it was, it was a very interesting experience to kind of eavesdrop on, on a D and an R, speaking of our earlier conversations, and some of their views of the world, and where it's common. I thought it was great that they were seeking commonality. I got to chime in very infrequently, but tried to work something in here and there. But I thought it gave me, actually, great hope, that very much the way I described the board work here this morning, that this is what is going to have to happen in the country, is, folks are going to have to get together, be thoughtful about where they can agree on issues, and then, and then agree on reforms. And I, they were both talking reforms, so that was a good, I thought, an excellent place. And I'll skip the rest of mine for now, if it was the time, and we'll move to action items, and discussion and action items. Item K is the approval of amendments to the Michigan Accountability Workbook. As you know, the Office of Educational Assessment Accountability is presenting this workbook for final improvement, approval by the board.
Oh.
You know, I've done this now two weeks in a row. I've just got to be more careful with my.
You just don't want to be upstaged, that's all.
Oh, just those two things. Actually, public participation, I kind of did have in my mind, because that's, we try to do that at one thirty, but please, Matenga, sorry for doing that two weeks in a row, or two months in a row. Because it's always an exciting report.
There's no, there's no message there, trust me.
Not at all, really. It's total incompetency.
Please, please, yes.
There was a couple of things that I was, I just got back from a virtual school seminar, so I was really excited to share with you about the virtual school movement that's happening around the country. However, there's also been a conversation that I've been having with my online colleagues, and our physical colleagues, of course, and I thought that it would be only responsible for me to at least share, and I know this is not a platform for debate, but at least I would, I want you to understand, and be free to some of the things that are happening in the, in the, with teachers. And so we are all, like, the frustration is growing in the issue of the Michigan teacher tenure debate. And so it's not, it's not a negative frustration, but it, but I wanted to share some of the tidbits that we have been talking about as we are addressing this issue as, as classroom teachers. And so the, the frustration comes from the persistence of educators who equate scores with learning. And so, you know, we all know in the bottom that, you know, like, it's not really, learning is not scores, the scores are not learning, but there's this persistence that student test scores is what really determines learning. And I was very, very excited to hear the presentation this morning about the new way of testing students, because that just makes, makes the conversation so much deeper, and so much better. And so, we are also talking about the essence of educating the whole student versus, you know, bettering our, our scores. And so we are in a race to better our scores, but we are, you know, at, at the peril of educating the whole student. Because right now, we are mandated as teachers, or at least we're encouraged, to do the critical thinking skills and the problem-solving skills, twenty-first century skills, and we keep layering all these skills that we'd like the students to, to have, yet we are still talking about scores as a measure of those skills that they are learning. So the, you know, one of the frustrations as teachers is that we are not, you know, that, the debate is not happening in the schools, and so we don't have the professional time to talk about these issues in school. And, you know, we do elect union representatives that then go on to speak to us, especially on technical things, such as, you know, contract negotiations. But when we talk about our own performance in our classroom and our students' performance, it's personal. And so we feel that the debate should begin in the classroom, or at least in the school. And so, you know, every administration, we feel like every administration, whether local or statewide, comes in with their new ideas of how the education can be bettered. And so then that particular idea gets layered onto the idea that was there before. And so we find ourselves as teachers juggling, and I'm preaching to the choir, obviously, but we're juggling eggs, you know, and the carpet is being moved from under us right now, but the, and we're being asked at this point, but don't let the eggs drop, because you'll lose your tenure. And so we are wondering as teachers if this is the focus that needs to be happening in this day and age right now. We understand that there are issues with our tenure, there, we understand that, but we wondered as teachers if this is exactly the, where the, where the, the problem lies. Because for us, it looks a lot like collective punishment. And I know that's not the intention, but the feeling, when it comes down, is collective punishment, because there are many elements that cause the student's scores to drop. Elements, and again, preaching to the choir, but elements such as, you know, teacher furloughs from building to building, from year to year. Elements such as class numbers, systemic problems, we discussed some of them today, even, where the administrators fail to apply for grants, elements like social issues. But then there's also elements that help elevate students' scores that are not measurable, such as the teacher's involvement outside of the classroom, clubs, tutoring, personal, the, the teachers or the staff or the community's personal involvement, because the teacher intuition, we know something is wrong, and we go there and calibrate it ourselves. Also, there is, there is, I'm going to give you an example of a student that I have. I, I don't have him this, this, this term, but this student failed my class three times, and last term was the first time he passed the class. And I, at one point, I remember telling him, you know, should, why don't you take this class with another teacher? Maybe you need a different structure? Nope, the student would come back, and nope, I want to take this class here. And it turns out, it just took him that much longer to grow as an individual. The student was a very angry student, he was very unfocused, and he would just lash out to everyone. And anything that, nothing that I talked to him in my classroom was relevant to what he was going through. But being in my class, it wasn't necessarily my class, but slowly but surely, this student has matured. And this term, he is the vice president of the anti-bullying club that just got formed last month. And to me, that personal measure, and not just that, but he's passing all of his classes for the first term ever, and we need to understand that this, that, that this student has experienced a personal growth and a whole child's growth, and not just that score. Why threaten all teachers, every school system, all teachers from all schools, when every school system has a different local element that determines the test scores and the student performance? But you should know that the conversation also has lots of hope, because we are, many of us are so excited to be teachers today, because we have a chance, and we have the option to be involved. And so I want to also leave you with some of the positive things. We are wanting a chance to create an action plan, and we, because if student performance and education is a defining factor in our state today, and if we intend to truly affect the way Michigan children learn, and not just focus on the numbers on the scoreboard, why not provide the teachers of the state of Michigan just the time to, so that we can provide a proposal, and maybe even a list of recommendations from the classroom, and not just from outsiders, who may or may not have been in the classroom for decades? And why not give us a chance to provide the ingredients that we know will work, or at least we have the intuition that it will work? So if you will, just please give us the time, and possibly even a deadline, so we don't dilly-dally too much. And not only will we invigorate the teachers who are disenfranchised, because sometimes burnout is, we, we call it burnout, but really it's disenfranchisement, I'm sorry, I'm not there. And, but also you will gain a lot of our support, and I would like to, I'd like to just, in behalf of just, just the teachers that we've been having this conversation, just ask for the board's support to ensure that the alignment of the results that we want are paired with, with the things that are measurable. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we respond to this? This is such an important topic, and I know you spoke from your heart when you brought it up, and I think there's a couple of things that, since this is my last meeting, I'm taking the opportunity to, to respond. But a number of states are way ahead on the discussions with faculty about assessment. And I think it's really important for us to separate tenure, which is a due process issue, from assessment of effectiveness of teaching, which is an assessment issue. And in most businesses, performance reviews are separated from the other kinds of things. So, anyway, but, I just, to give you hope, where teachers have been given the lead in designing the assessment rubrics, the, the product is absolutely fantastic. I just looked at one in Jefferson County, Colorado, over my Thanksgiving break, and I was just, and it was very much influenced by the teachers themselves in the design over a period of several years, because, you know, they've been moving to performance pay in the Denver District and some other things. Anyway, I'm more than happy to share the rubric, which is a great outcome, but I think the more valuable thing was the process, the engagement, the purposeful engagement of educators in designing an assessment system that responded to just those kinds of factors that Matenga has, has laid out. And I hope going forward, as, as this, this state moves to do something, because I'm sure it's on, the train has left the station, and there's somebody writing it on the thing. Yesterday, I spoke to a group, and I, I said that Educators, Lois was there, and I said, the train is out of the station, but the educators need to drive the train and not be in the caboose getting the product, that, you know, at the end of, end of the ride. So, I'll be happy to share that rubric, but, but I would never want anyone to just adopt it, because it's the process. But you must engage your faculty in the design of the assessment. They know, they know their.
And maybe just to.
Another charge, I'll put it as PS.
Just to clarify a little bit, though, the train has left the station, but it is all contingent on the locals developing it for themselves. It's, it's in the law. So it, it really has attended to that. I'm happy about that, that it wasn't left to a one-size-fits-all state design. So what they're doing, and I'm not sure this is the only way to do it, Lois, but I'm assuming that when local unions bargain this with their boards, which is basically what's going on, that, that they've got some process that they're working out with their individual teachers in that unit, whether it's, whether it's Holt, or Detroit, or whatever, and then, you know, bringing that to the table, and then, and that's where the voice, you know, so in a way, we're luckier than some states, because a lot of states, this has been all top-down, the way it's been designed.
So you can be designed locally and all of that, but I really, and not just teacher representatives, I mean, I'm talking about a swath of, you know, elementary, middle, higher, alternative kinds of educators that work with the different populations, that career affects.
The only reason you probably noticed a theme with me today, and I apologize for it, but I'm, I'm, I've been coached by my folks that I work with after the last meeting, that I need to be clearer about when things are, are at a state level and a local level, because then the expectation might be that it's ours. And in this case, it's another example where we've already received some proposals.
Thank you.
For the so-called turnaround schools that Mary Alice has seen, that have done exceptional work with their unions to put together thoughtful changes that are going to impact the school improvement and, and put them on the right track. So, I mean, it gives me more and more confidence that that's, that's going to work. And I, I think that's, you know, but having said that, I thought as you, Liz, and Matenga were talking, there may be a way that we, for the sake of discussion, we have our own association group, in a sense, with the network, and maybe we ask the network to provide some guidance that would be given to local districts to consider.
We're doing that.
You're doing that? Okay. Well, you're on it. Good.
The board, the State Board has a bully pulpit. You don't have to do the work, and the department doesn't have to do the work, but you can certainly set the expectation for, for participation statewide, and it can be, it can be, come from the President of the Board, it can come from a resolution of the Board, but somehow or another, to inform and advise the universe that there are some ways better than others to go about this process. I just.
That's a good point.
Visiting all these schools, I find that much as we think, when something happens here, it goes out there, it doesn't. It doesn't. And, you know, and so it, it doesn't hurt to make statements, or do an op-ed, or tell our people from the media that, that this board is encouraging local boards to have a, an engaging practice in fulfilling the requirement.
That's a good point.
And I think, I think what's important, too, is that when we say we want it, we want to have it fully engaged at the local level, we don't mean fully engaged by the, by the administrators alone. We want it fully engaged by the population of that community of professionals that do this, so that it's, so that it really reflects, because I agree with Matenga, the professionals know where their pluses and minuses are. The professionals know what they need to really work on. They may not always voice it. And they also know what they really are doing well. And so I think we need to utter that as well.
Yeah. Often, there's no platform to voice it.
Right. Exactly.
Or time, or required time.
Well, and I think that there sometimes is a little bit of a, a potential, boy, maybe I shouldn't say this, it's not going to sit well with someone else that I know that, you know, and so I think that there's, there's not a real encouragement to be, to be a leader, to stand up and really say what you believe. So this gives them that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Public participation.
We do have two individuals today who have submitted forms. We're going to start with David Hales from Farmington Hills. He is here representing the Michigan Social Studies Supervisors Association.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
David, I've aged since we were together at Farmington, and you haven't. What's going on here?
Oh, this is a great start. This is a wonderful start. Yes, Mike was my superintendent in Farmington Schools many years ago, and then I just missed you at Wayne ReesA, too.
That's right.
Well, thank you, and good afternoon. My name is David Hales, and I'm the social studies consultant at the Wayne County ReesA. I'm here to speak with you today, in my role, though, as the Chair of the Michigan Social Studies Supervisors Association. This organization, which is an affiliate of the National Social Studies Supervisors Association, is committed to promoting the common interest of social studies supervisors in instruction, curriculum, materials, research, teacher training, and social action. It also serves to bring together social studies leadership in all of the ISDs and ReesAs in Michigan, as well as numerous larger school districts, and the various social studies discipline-based organizations. I'm here this afternoon, though, to express our concern that the social studies consultant position at MDE continues to go unfilled, but to also communicate our desire to work with you to resolve this issue. We believe that there are some creative ways to fill this need, and that also recognize the challenging economic conditions in Michigan. As a core academic subject, and one which is required for high school graduation, social studies deserves leadership in the Department of Education. I recently experienced a situation which this need was very evident. At a recent Common Core rollout session that I attended, the importance of the Common Core state standards was stressed, and that information would be provided to help guide participants in working through their implementation. Over the course of the day, however, though, social studies was only mentioned briefly by the science consultant, and there were no sessions on the Common Core on the literacy standards in history or social studies for any of the rollout participants. MTRSA believes that representation in social studies is essential in helping educators be successful in implementing these new and important standards. But this isn't a responsibility, though, that we feel rests solely on the shoulders of MDE. We're stronger when we work together, and there are many examples, in which partnerships between ISDs and ReesAs are already providing social studies leadership. One of the best known is the development and implementation of the Michigan Citizenship Collaborative Curriculum. Under the leadership of developing partners at Oakland Schools, Macomb ISD, the Genesee ISD, Ottawa, Berrien, and Ingham ISD, their wonderful work and commitment has provided a high-quality resource for classroom teachers to utilize in social studies. Equally important, numerous other ISDs and ReesAs around the state are supporting their work through professional development. This collaboration also includes the participation of the various social studies discipline-based organizations throughout the state. Teachers and students are benefiting from this partnership, and they're an example of the many talented social studies professionals in our state. They're passionate about the content, and understand the crucial and unique importance social studies plays in developing responsible citizenship. Equally, we have a dedicated group of organizations, like the Michigan Council for the Social Studies, the Michigan Geographic Alliance, the Michigan Council on History Education, the Michigan Center for Civic Education, and the Michigan Council on Economic Education, that all work closely together in this state to support social studies educators. They're essential partner, partners in providing professional development, and we're eager to have MDE as a partner in this collaboration, and would like to work with the board to help achieve this. In the future, near future, MTRSA will be contacting you to put forth some ideas from which we can begin the process of collaborating in social studies leadership at MDE. As I stated earlier, and my colleagues in the social studies discipline of economics can certainly attest, we live in a world of unlimited wants, and unfortunately, limited resources. Still, we feel there are some creative solutions that draw on existing resources and relationships in the social studies community that might be considered. On behalf of the Michigan Social Studies Supervisors Association, we're looking forward to engaging the board in this endeavor. Thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns and our optimism for the future of social studies in Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's good information for us.
Our other speaker today is David Borth from Big Rapids, representing the network of Michigan educators.
My mentor in all things department.
My mentor in all things departmental and state board-related is Jeanne Shane, who's now sitting at her TV going, oh, what's he up to today? I'm here for the network, really, sort of to echo what he said a little bit. We've got six, almost 600 recognized educators that are willing to be involved, and are, many of them are involved in what you're doing, and will continue to be. But I would be terribly remiss today if I didn't, in behalf of the network, say something about Carolyn and Liz, and their support of the network, and how valuable you've been to the, to the state board, and, you know, I've had this opportunity to sit out here for, like, the last seven years, and watch you two be remarkable board members. So in behalf of educators in Michigan, I think I can speak, educators in Michigan, those of us in the field, thank you. Awesome job. I would also be remiss, though, if I didn't mention that our network, which is unique in the country, would not be successful without this partnership between those of us in the field, and the network, and this board, and the support you've given us, and the department. It really takes all three to be successful. I've done a ton of presentations around the country. We're the only remaining network in the milking system. We're unique as a broad network. That only works because there are three pieces to this: you, as a board, us, as a group of educators who care deeply, and have been recognized for their caring, and the department. And there are a couple of people that are leaving that really have been critical to that. One is Eileen. Thank you, Eileen. You've been very supportive, very helpful, all the way down the road, trying to keep me in line where the board's concerned, and been very supportive to Jean. But, I'll probably have a hard time with this. We would not be successful if it wasn't for the department's support through Mike, through Jean. Jeanne Shane has been a remarkable person in carrying, helping carry the network forward. Every time I do something, it looks like I'm going to step in it, she says, hey, you're going to step in it, and you don't do it. And that has been incredibly helpful, but having a person inside the department that can help us figure this out, and make it possible for us to be of service to you as a department and a board, has been an incredible gift. To education in Michigan, we had this great idea. We've been able to carry it off, because it's supported at this table, and it's supported in this department, and it's supported by someone, now, you're going to have to find somebody, you know, to take her place, Mike. This is, this is our request. We really need to have a liaison. This organization's not going away. I'm no longer chair. June Tyson, who sat in that chair a couple of years ago, is now the team leader for the network. But what it's all about is collaboration. And in today's world, we're not ever going to succeed if we don't collaborate, because there just aren't enough resources around to every, for anybody to do it on their own. So here we are, we're the network. We're here to be there for you. Jeanne has been there for us. She's a remarkable person. We're going to miss her, but maybe we'll find a way to keep her active in the network some way, so then maybe she could still be active, you know, in education. Anyway, thank you. For educators in the field, you've made a tremendous difference.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Can I just briefly say, more in a general way, that I've got to be careful how I say these things, because I, I think we're going to be fine ultimately, and I don't, I think Liz made an excellent point a moment ago about, there's still lots of things we could do, for instance, with bully pulpit, a perfect example, where a board's voice would be very helpful in, in helping local boards, and some of what we talked about today, more push-out to state board, to, to board presidents. I do want to say, on behalf of the folks that are left, that we're going to have more of this testimony. The two Davids, the first David, you know, when you're, when you have budget directives that you can replace half of what you lose, you, you give up position, it's the nature of the beast. When Eileen leaves, to say the least, it's a giant vacuum. You know, these things don't happen by accident. It's an amazing project that takes weeks into making, that is led by Eileen with Merz's help. And then even Dave's point, I mean, you know, I mean, no one more than me would wish we could just replace Jeanne, and just replace Eileen, and just go that route. But I, I'm just kind of preparing us that there'll be more of this testimony, and a little bit that we'd appreciate, and feel we get from you, by the way, and thank you for that, is, is a little bit of cushion from, when, when you get this in the field, or even on days like today, that it is what it is. I mean, we're a department of a couple of thousand, and now we're a department of a couple of hundred, and getting smaller. And most of those are, as you know, federally, 90% are federal folks with very specific functions that we can't use for state work, so. But I, I, it is, it, when we meet Fridays at the superintendents' group, we're struggling with this. I'm not going to pretend, I, as David said, I was the superintendent in Farmington 20 years ago, and at RISA, nothing like this have we ever faced, nothing close to this. I do think, in the spirit of what Liz said earlier, it, we feel this, too, in our supergroup meetings, that there's opportunities with crises like this to actually improve things. So I, this isn't Neil and Gloom. I'm just saying, though, that things like not replacing a specific position is out of our hands to some degree. It's a budget issue, and we're going to do the best we can.
You know, like, Mike, I read in the paper, something that was reported, that Governor Alex Snyder said, that he was going to review the replacing, one, two-for-one, one-for-two, I mean, and he's going to look at the function of the person that's gone, and will review that, and maybe that person, you know, that position can be replaced. So I, I would start making a case for these, because he'll listen to cases.
Yeah. I think we have his ear on that very issue. I think that we've helped influence some of that thinking on his part, because I think, with no malice, but a budget decision that's based on randomness of retirements is, is, in fairness, at the end of an administration, it's harder to get something resolved in the short time that, that a lame duck governor had. But I am hopeful, I do think we're hitting a cliff, though. So while he's saying that, on the one hand, I believe he's sincere about that, the funding cliff, based on federal funds stopping now, is going to be in addition to this. So what we, you know, I mean, I think one thing that I don't know much about is, when he talks about the value budgeting, for example, but I think the idea that there's whole functions that we're going to have to decide as a state, we don't do anymore, rather than what I call boiling the frog, which is that you still try to keep doing everything, but with fewer people, and then the fewer people who are left leave because they just can't handle it. You know the story about the frog?
Yeah, we know that.
I guess that'd be, that, but I, so if he reconsidered, that would be great. What we, we don't know is what will be the backfill, then, to replace what would have been saved there. Ideally, it would be whole parts of government outside of education that might have to be reduced in order to cover that, and we'll, we'll, I think an innovative look is going to be helpful, and we'll take a step at a time.
Well, I think Mr. Hales' point about the importance of the social studies person is very valid.
Yeah.
I certainly would support anything we can do to keep that position, or when work, or if not, to use the organizations that he mentioned.
Yeah.
That's absolutely critical.
No, I think he's offering options that we could probably work with.
Yes, right.
But I'll just, I would just say, every position we're going to eliminate, there isn't an unimportant one. I don't know if there ever has been the last five years, but there's certainly none anymore. Every single one of them is detrimental to our functioning. But, hey, I, David is a good thinker. I knew him as a young man, when he first got into teaching, and if David's got some ideas, both Davids are good thinkers, by the way, but David Hales, I meant, he's probably going to offer some solutions that might involve those other associations. I mean, we'd take one on loan a year at a time, maybe there's something like that, where they, you know, we, we had some folks from ISDs here on, helping Patty on crosswalking the, at the time, that we went to high school requirements, and wanted to have the two-year career tech sequence satisfy some of the so-called academics, so maybe that'll be a way to solve some of this.
There has to be a way.
Yeah.
There's a will. There's a way.
We'll have to, we'll have to work on that together, that's for sure. Okay, now I'm, now I'm going to the approval of the amendments to the Michigan Accountability Workbook with Sally and Joseph and Vanessa. And, you know, they were here, as you know, before, and today's the day for the actual action, and then we would submit the Accountability Workbook to the U.S. Department of Education. The October meeting, if you recall, was when we presented this to the board two months ago. It's submitted now for approval, with a few minor revisions that were identified to the board at the October meeting. Sally, I think I'm getting actually into some of your issues, so go ahead.
Yes, you are. Do we only have five minutes, Eileen?
I'm sorry?
Do we only have five minutes?
I didn't want, I won't start it, I just haven't.
That's a good idea, though.
Is that what you want?
This was, is a good idea, I think. The workbook should not be formed, you've seen it when we were back here, you had suggested we make a couple of adjustments, which we had done, that were defined in the, in the October board meeting, and those adjustments are reflected in the cover memo. So I think at this point, rather than going through it in detail again, if you've got questions, we'd be certainly-
Cassandra, please.
I actually have a couple of questions. One is, is there a deadline by which this is required, the feds?
Um, yes, I bet I don't know what it is. Early January?
It's January?
Yeah.
Okay. My concern with it was the heavy inclusion of the MISAS, which I completely understand why it's in there, but the fact that it hasn't passed the legislature yet, and we're going to have a completely new legislature next year, I guess my question is, is it premature to put all of the MISAS stuff in there, or is there a way that, well, I guess, I'm going to ask just a multiple of questions. What happens if we send it to the feds, and then it doesn't pass the legislature?
Well, let's do a couple of things. If, we need to send it, so we send it in, they approve it. If the legislature does not pass the MISAS, then we can go in and make a revision-
Okay.
Technical amendments.
A technical amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we have the ability to do that, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would add this, that would assume that the, that the board accepts their limited authority in that regard.
What does that explain that?
Well, I think that's up to you, but if that were to happen at the legislative committee level, I think, you know, you've reminded me and others regularly of your role, according to the Constitution, as a state board, and I'm not clear, we're not clear, at least in-house, that, we don't have to deal with this right now, because it may do just fine.
Yeah, this might be a premature conversation to have, so, but I, my concern really was, if we send this to the federal government, and then it doesn't go through, what do we do? And if we can make amendments, then, you know, that, that's good, but if, I think we need to make sure, if we can't make amendments, then we need to rethink whether we want to put this much detail in there.
Well, we can make amendments, obviously, but also, there is, I remember, we looked at the language pretty closely, there's a legitimate question over who's got the last word on this, with probably the favor of the state board has the last word on what the, the expectations are with the accreditation system, and the legislature's role is potentially advisory and reviewing, but not the last word. So those, Mike's suggesting, is push comes to shove, we can have a constitutional fight over who's got the last word here. I don't think we're, we're going to have that, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not recommending that. I, I'm saying there's really two things. One would be the revision, if you wanted to stand by whatever their action was, but I think, not necessarily just for MISAS, that there may be an important discussion to have about the role of the board versus a legislature in some areas that you've brought up before. But I, but that would be for you to determine, and I'm not necessarily recommending that we don't accept their, their verdict on that, I guess if that's the right way to think about it. It could have ramifications for other issues related to your authority versus, especially when it's not the entire legislature, it's a committee of the legislature, that in effect can supersede the board's will. So it's, it's less issue, from my point of view, this isn't about that issue. This issue may stand on its own, with, with the board accepting the, the verdict of the legislature, and that would be fine. But there may be some issues in thinking about the role of the state board versus a committee of a legislature that's worth some debate. I'm not sure about a constitutional crisis, but at least some discussion.
Last question, would it make sense to put a statement in here that this is still moving through the process, and that it, you know, it's some, some form of, this is, I know it says proposed, but maybe a stronger statement saying that this is a proposed accreditation system that has to go through a couple additional steps before we can implement?
Well, that's one reason I brought that up, because I'm, please, I should-
I, I think what this is, though, is, and correct me, please, if I've misunderstood, but I think this is what the board and the department wants to see happen. And so in our mind, it's not proposed. It's what we want to see happen. The fact that the legislation is required to make it actually take place is something else. But I think if we get into the, the business of, of entering into reports, or requests, or workbook assessments, or whatever it is, with the Department of Education federally, and, and put into it what also might happen in our state, then we have lessened our impact for what the board at the state level, and the department at the state level, wants to see happen. And I'd like to have us keep our authority, not muddy it with everything else. I don't think it, I'm guessing that many other states have that situation, too, Cassandra, but I'd like to keep our authority clear, that this is what we want to see happen. And then-
And that, that is certainly a powerful statement.
Mm-hmm.
But what we'd like to see happen doesn't always get to happen.
I understand that.
So that's kind of my concern.
But that's not what this is about.
Cassandra, I'm sorry, Nancy, to answer your question, I think proposed would handle that. It says proposed in the workbook.
Yeah.
Does it? I'm asking, rather than-
To Nancy's point, I may say this already, I mean, it's perfectly accurate and appropriate to say, this is the accreditation system approved by the State Board of Education. It's under review by the relevant legislative committees per whatever law. That's the truth, that's what's happening. That could be included. I, I agree with Nancy totally, we want to do nothing that suggests that our state board, though we have, you know, internally, it wasn't a, it wasn't a unanimous vote on that accreditation system, but the state board policy approved is this accreditation system, period, and it is under review by legislative committees per the statute, so.
That's fine. And my question has nothing to do with the fact that this was not a unanimous vote.
No, no, I'm just saying that.
This is about what is legally required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just say, I've had a pretty direct conversation, just in my role, with the Ed Alliance, I'm not representing others in this, but, you see, from our point of view, there's interests represented here regularly that will take part in referent groups, and get a shot at developing this, more than frankly, the staff develops it. So we develop this based on a referent group, and then the referent group comes and meets with the board, and tries to get changes that maybe they didn't get unanimously through a referent group. And then when that doesn't work, I'm just telling it as it is, are now working the legislature to try to get that changed at that level. We just need to understand what we're dealing with, and there's a bigger issue here, which is what is really the authority of the state board? No matter what this particular issue is, this may be one to let play out, and let, you know, if it doesn't, if it doesn't satisfy the legislators' committees, maybe that's the reason to not fight that. But there is a bigger issue here, and from my point of view, it's not, it's your decision ultimately on the constitutional issue. My point is, I can't, I, I, this is as direct as I said it to the Ed Alliance, it was a little uncomfortable that day, but I don't know how, we have to reinvent the way we're working with folks, that they can't get, keep getting two, and three, and four shots at something, when in fact, we're even giving up some of our authority as staff, in order to have a referent group work on a proposal over two years, and then some members of that same referent group come in and fight it at a board meeting, and then fight it at a legislative committee. So, you know, another alternative would be that we bring in what the staff thinks is the best resolution to that, and then frankly, that's, you know, I do think that, and I'm not taking away, hell, I was, heck, I was one of those folks, so I'm not taking away the right to, to have your voice heard, but one of the things we're thinking about in house is, maybe we need to bring you our best thinking on this, and then- best thinking on this, and then those associations and others can come in and tell the Board why they may not agree. And that would be healthy. But right now, I feel like we're between a rock and a hard place because as staff, we take all that advice, basically put together a proposal, a consensus proposal, built in this case over two years by constituent groups, and then they have a shot at it, and then another shot at it. So this isn't about the Board, that's your concern. But this is, this little sub-part of it is, I'm leaning more towards that we'll develop a proposal with our in-house expertise, bring it to the Board, and then others appropriately would have a shot to say to the Board, we think there's a mistake, well-intentioned maybe, but we think the staff and the superintendent are off base on item X. I mean, item X, frankly, on this one, in large part is the AYP that the Board decided to include. So we've decided as a staff that it's our job to support the Board's position on that, and we've done that aggressively. It ironically may not have been the position that we would have brought in if we had made our own proposal. I mean, I don't, we didn't, you know, we didn't do it that way. But you know what I mean? So I've got to find ways that we allow the proper kind of democracy, really, to work, which is, all these interests should have a right to let the Board know, please don't make that decision without our thinking taken into account. I'm just worried about it coming into account two and three times. And that's what I, so my direct discussion, and we're going to follow up on it, is how do we think about this in a way that helps all the parties work? And it wouldn't take anything away from them if we just brought our own proposal in as a department, because they'd have the right at this meeting then to say, you know, maybe well-intentioned, but we think what Mike and the staff have brought in won't serve you well, and they make the points as they've made. But our frustration is that it comes two and three times, and that's what we've got to try to sort through ourselves. Because there's absolute reason for healthy debate on this. I think the fear of the consequences is a little bit overblown, by the way. You'd have to be three years in a row unaccredited to have any consequences, and it's just not really likely to happen when you look at that. But nevertheless, I'm not saying there isn't reason for healthy debate, and, but as I'm saying, one might be that we bring in our best thinking and then let everyone come to the Board as they may see fit and say, you know, we just don't agree with this piece. You know, Association of Superintendents, Association of Teachers, or whatever, and let the Board decide.
That might be...
That might be where we have to go. Because otherwise, what we're doing is two years of trying to get consensus, and even putting items in a proposal to you that technically is my recommendation, but there's pieces in that recommendation sometimes that I may not even agree with, but I'm thinking, you know what, if that was the consensus of the group, there's probably some value to it. And so I'm just describing it another way. It doesn't have anything to do with this particular issue, because I think your point's well-taken. We should be clearer in that. John, I think John described a way that we'd do it.
That's perfect. I need to take a moment.
And then let this other thing kind of play out. I mean, we're just going to continue to make the presentation when the committees do meet related to supporting the Board's position on this, and then it goes where it goes, you know. I mean, as I said, there's room for disagreement on this issue. But our job at this point as a staff is to support the Board's position. That's what we're doing.
Yep.
You know I've had a lot of misgivings about this, and I still do. I think it's very punitive in nature. I don't like the idea of putting off corrections on it. And so I'm planning on voting no on...
We need to get a motion on the floor before we can plan anything. I would move that we approve the amendments to the Michigan Accountability Workbook as presented.
Support, move by Nancy, supported by John?
...the bottom line language in that motion per the discussion, that make sure that this includes the statement, MISAS, the Board-approved policy under review by the relevant legislative committees per statute. If that language, the motion...
Yeah, that's fine.
The motion to include that.
Good, Cassandra.
No, I would...
Okay. A discussion. Kath, please.
I, as you know, I voted no on MISAS, because I agreed with the points that Cassandra had raised. And I had some misgivings about it, too, obviously. And it's possible that when the legislative committees review this, there'll be new people looking at it. It won't be the, you know, a lot of new members of these education committees. So it's possible that they may see things and raise questions that are very legitimate. And we might want to take another look at it. As a result, if they don't approve it, we would have to.
Well, you may have to.
We may have to, yeah.
That would be your call.
Right. But they may raise questions that are, that make a lot of sense.
So then we'll deal with them when they come.
Right. So it is possible that we'll have another look at this.
Yes, certainly. Yeah, and I think the language, if I could clarify, there may be other things that Mary Anne, for instance, is concerned about in this. But if it was strictly MISAS, I'm just expressing a thought that if it was strictly the MISAS, the MISAS isn't done one way or the other anyway. It's either because you'll accept the legislative thing or not, and there's a way out through the rewording. And I would, it would be, unless there's other, what's the word I'm looking for? Unless there's other objections to it, and there may be, the help we would appreciate would be being able to send this in on a timely basis. It is contingent upon MISAS actually getting through an approval process, either legislature or revision on your part. If there are other items in the book, then that's a different issue. But I hope we could get a yes vote if it was strictly MISAS, because it doesn't take away the opportunity to reflect on that again.
And I would encourage us to vote on the Michigan Accountability Workbook. And as you say, we may revisit the MISAS, and we'll have a different Board, too, in a couple of months, too. But as of now, that's where we are. I would encourage us to vote on it.
Sending it to Washington. So call the question.
Yeah?
Call the question.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
No.
Thank you. I think that passes. That was one no, if I'm not right. Okay. But in a way, you know, we've been sitting on this the last few meetings with Suits Group, and I think it was, we're not advocating any of these positions, by the way. I want to be clear about that. I think the Board has the right, number one, to revisit, of course, and the whole deal. We were just trying to say that if anything, we're in a position right now, which we felt, we felt at a meeting a few months ago, as if the Board might have thought that we weren't presenting with vigor, the position that you had taken. And once it's taken, whether it's unanimous or majority vote, we're clear on following it with vigor and supporting it, and we've done so. And I don't know if this is helpful or hurtful to say, but even if, as I said, there's issues that we wouldn't agree with 100%, because I think if the staff at that time had made a bit of a different recommendation, if you recall, along with the MISAS group.
But also, you raised a related but different issue, which is a large issue of sort of how we, as a Board, want to see policy developed and decisions presented and discussed here, which we've revisited several times during my tenure on the Board, including prior to your superintendency, which is, do we ask the superintendent and the staff to manage a process that involves all the stakeholders and then come to their best, not necessarily compromise, but actually come to a recommendation that you, superintendent and staff, stand behind after that process of consultation? That's one way of, but it's your recommendation, after your, on our behalf, process of consultation deliberation with all the stakeholders, but you're still coming with your best sense of, here's the recommendation we believe in after this consultation. Or, you know, the alternative you proposed was, you, as superintendent and staff, come to your best recommendation to us, and then let stakeholders weigh in. Those are two very different policy development approaches. So I think we, before we change or proceed in one direction or another, we should have a lot more discussion about what's the most effective policy development process.
Yeah. I just think, if I may, that to that point, you never really get clarity from the staff under the existing process. You never really understand clearly what our recommendation is, because even though you're saying, John, the right thing in a sense that it's our recommendation, once you've gone through a consensus-building process, it's, when I was on the other side of it, I would have taken it as...
An affront. You would have taken it as an affront, if it wasn't a bullshit.
An affront, and just not real. So I mean, that's why, I don't think it would, if I were in my other, my previous job, in some ways, there'd be an advantage that I could speak directly to the Board based on a presentation and a firm recommendation from the staff. That there'd be no question, that it was filtered somehow, or whatever.
And I'm not saying one's better than the other. And I'm also saying, you know, suggesting there may be third, fourth, and fifth variants, which is, this is a compromised position. We are not, you know, there are some things I, as superintendent, disagree with, but this is the best we could do. Or this is the best we could do with all stakeholders, and it is something I totally recommend.
Okay.
Or this is my recommendation from staff and the superintendent, now let's hear from the stakeholders. There may be five or six other permutations on how policy gets developed and presented. And I think it's up to us as a Board, with you, to decide what's the approach that, and maybe it's different approaches on different topics, but what's the approach that we think works in the best interest of the best outcome? And that's a different, that's a broader discussion about how to proceed in this work, so...
Okay. Well, that's helpful. We'll get to...
Thought this was going to be just a celebration day.
We're getting there. We're crunching along towards it. And so the next item is approval of the Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Spending Plan. And at the October 10th meeting, the Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Committee meeting, members reviewed the 2010-11 spending plan for the camp. So the approval of this spending plan is by the entire Board, and I know Carol and Rick and Alex are joining us, and I know Board members have been involved, too, so...
I would move approval of the Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Spending Plan for 2010... Well, you've got to do that before you have a good discussion. 2010, 2011.
Support.
Now we can discuss.
Move by Nancy, supported by Liz. Discussion.
Support today.
Well, okay. You want Carol to say?
I'd be happy to say something.
Okay.
And I'm really grateful for that opportunity, because this is Rick Floria's last meeting as well. He's been our financial management director for quite some time. He's already lost his entire budget staff to the incentive retirement, so when he leaves on December 16th, we'll be rebuilding. And we've already started that process, but thank you, Rick, from me, and I know that the Board has appreciated your work as well. So thank you very much.
And Rick, do you just, I don't know if this is fair, here I'm asking you something that you're not comfortable, but I think it's fine.
Look how ready he's getting.
The new, isn't it, the new budget director that Governor Lex Snyder has chosen was looking at different houses, and one of them was yours, right? We thought it was a perfect fit, budget to budget.
Well, it has good heritage.
It doesn't have dollar signs for life.
Leaving house.
Very quickly, we're asking your approval today for the Camp Teshmehita, or Camp T., as we call it, spending plan. And there is a State Board of Education Subcommittee that works on that, Mrs. Bauer, Mary Ann McGuire, and Kathy Strauss. And so they are intimately aware of it and have approved this spending plan to bring to you. Alex Devlantis is our in-house resident expert on all of our property issues. So with that, this is a spending plan that we bring to you every year. I don't know if Mrs. Bauer, Mrs. Strauss, or Mary Ann McGuire would like to say anything?
Well, I would... Go ahead, Mrs. and Mary Ann.
Whoever wants to be first.
I'll go first.
Well, I just want to take this minute to say thank you. This has been a real privilege to serve on the Trust Fund Committee, and I will be leaving that committee, leaving the Board service this year. And I really want to commend Alex and Rick and Bruce and the people at the camp that make it possible. Pat Cannon is here from the Commission for the Blind. And so, Pat, I want you to hear this as well, but over the years, we've made some wonderful improvements to the camp. I commend both these gentlemen for taking field trips with us to do, you know, not everybody wants to go on field trips with Board members who want to poop to them and be picky about what they see. But no, it's really been a wonderful partnership between the Department, the trustees of the trust fund, the use of the money has been judicious, and the camp this summer, I think, had one of its best seasons in a long, long time. So thank you for all of your gifts. I'm glad you're going to be around. Wish you great retirement. You can go to Camp T. for vacation.
There you go.
It's got a lot of nice grounds.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Mary Ann was next.
Oh, thank you. Rick, I just want to say how wonderful it's been to rely on you, to trust you, and to work with you on this committee. It's been a lot of years. And we've been through a lot of wars together. But it's, I feel we came out okay on all of this. And we've been able to save a lot of money, I think, for the trust fund. And I'm glad you and Alex will still be working together and that we'll be seeing you. Thank you so much for everything.
Well, I would like to...
Kath, please.
I'd like to echo what Liz and Mary Ann have said. We've taken our responsibility very seriously, and we have tried to upgrade the camp, and I think we have, in a very positive way. We've got better management of it now, better control of it. And we depended on you, Rick, so much, and Alex, too, but of course, you're not retiring, or you did once, but you're not. Maybe you could come back, too, and other guys, that would be good, but...
He's moving.
Where are you, currently selling your house? Moving out of town?
I hope to.
Oh, hmm. We'll have to find out all the details of it. But we did review this, the committee did review this spending plan very carefully and asked a lot of questions, got a lot of answers, and we recommend it, so... But I do want to add my thanks to you, Rick. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
We wish you well. We'll miss you. We're going to miss so many people.
I know.
It's scary to think that so many good people are retiring. So be careful what you wish for with this early retirement, because it worked out too well for the state in one way, with the budget, and terrible for us. So, anyway, I urge a yes vote on this.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? And Rick, before you leave, if you're, Rick is really kind of a good example of what I think is most of, all of the MDE employees. Modest, hardworking, I don't know how to describe it. I mean, it's going to be a big loss, as has already been said.
Ruthlessly competent.
Yeah.
Ruthlessly competent.
That's a good way to put it. So thanks. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, come on, your turn. Lisa provided the Board with legislative update, but I think going to highlight a few items for us, and then we're going to be right on target, like we planned this.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just a couple of wrap-up items. The Edge of Jobs bill, the bill that had the Edge of Jobs money, the ADARE funding to pay for the ADARE data collection because of that court case, and some other technical fixes related to maintenance of effort and some transfers, did pass in the wee late hours of the last night of session, and has already been signed into law. So our staff are already working on doing what they need to do to distribute that money. It's around 246 million to the local school districts. If you remember, this was part of a bill previously that the governor vetoed because the federal government sent a letter saying the formula by which the legislature had appropriated it in the earlier version was not appropriate, essentially. And so they did a different kind of formula, which I described a bit in the update before you, and that's now passed and been signed into law. Just a couple of other quick highlights, because we've had a couple of meetings, and since Senator Cassis came and presented, I wanted to let you know that unfortunately, her bill made it over to the House, but, and they were trying to get a discharge to get it moved on that last day of session, but it did not move. And so I'm not sure if she's working with some other, oftentimes, the senator coming in for that district will introduce the bills from the previous senator, or if someone else will pick it up. My guess is someone else will pick it up, because it's a pretty good bill. But we'll hopefully see that in the next session. And... that in the next session. And the only other thing I wanted to note was the Child Nutrition Act, they're still talking about a vote in lame duck. I, you know, I don't know if that's going to happen, there's so little time left, but it could still happen.
I thought I read that the child, that the nutrition act was...
Did it get passed? And I missed it. You're more ahead than I am.
I think we got it from NASB.
It did.
The only other thing I wanted to go over real quick was what we know so far about leadership in the next session, which is, we know that in the Senate, it'll be Randy Richardville as Majority Leader, the Senate Majority Leader, and Gretchen Whitmer as the Minority Leader. The Chair of Approves in the Senate side is going to be Roger Khan, Senator Roger Khan. I believe he has an education background, so that could be a plus for us. I'm not sure. I have not, he's not been on education committees before, so he's not someone I've necessarily worked closely with. On the House side, Speaker Jase Bolger-James, and he's called Jase, J-A-S-E, but his name is James Bolger. On the Republican side, and the Minority Leader is Richard Hamel, who did serve on the Subcommittee that covered our budget. So he's already knowledgeable about the MDE budget and the school aid budget as well, so that'll be helpful to us. And the Chair of Approves is Chuck Moss, who also served on the Subcommittee on the MDE and School Aid Budget. So he'll already have some, some background knowledge. We don't know yet, though, who's going to be specifically the House or Senate Education Chair or the Chair of the Subcommittee overlooking our budgets. Once I know that, I will, of course, forward that information out to you. But we don't have it as of yet.
Who are the Democratic leaders in the House?
In the House, it is, Richard Hamel is the Minority Leader.
Oh, I'm sorry. I messed that up. Never mind.
No, it's okay.
Go.
Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted, yesterday I got an email from our National Association of State Boards that the Senate's Labor, Health, and Human Services Bill will cut the, it's supposed to be voted on on the 18th, and they're having a four o'clock emergency conference call this afternoon on this. But what it will cut is the, oh, wait a minute, I want to get the exact roads, the funding for our school health programs. And the cost to Michigan would be 769,483 dollars as the state appropriation. But the city of Detroit also is a recipient of funding under that, and they get currently 59,043 dollars. And both would be, this is all the school health money that there is. And I don't know if we're contacting our senators on this as, as a department. I know as individuals, we...
Is that, you said that was from NASB?
Yeah.
Can you forward that to me?
There's a four o'clock conference call today that they're calling for an emergency call because the FY 2011 Labor, Health, and Human Services and Education Appropriations Bill, Senate 3686, contains proposed language that would eliminate funding for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's Division of Adolescent School Health. So if they wipe out the Division of Adolescent School Health, that wipes out each of the state's money for school health programs. And it's almost a million dollars for the state of Michigan between Detroit and, I can, I can share this with you.
That would be great.
It has all the detail, rather than spread it out here.
That would be very helpful.
But it's pretty, that would be pretty dire.
Yeah, we should be doing some, we should at least contact our senators on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I said this at the last month also, but as we work on food and nutrition, remember that our own Senator Stabenow is now going to be the Chair of that committee in the new session.
Yeah. That should be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Liz.
Hey, Kathy.
Our next item's the consent agenda. As a, it's kind of a personal privilege, it's a consent agenda with 59 folks who are retiring from the department. And each of them have a unique resolution that has been crafted for them, and they're going to be given this. So it may feel a little bit like it's all in one shot, but these are unique resolutions that have been written with each person individually in mind.
Read them all.
And also, I asked as best we could to get, if we could get the timing right, and I know a bunch of them are here today, and I would just ask the board to stand, no, we won't stand yet, because I'd like our retirees who've served MDE so well, who are here with us right now, to stand up so that we can recognize you, please. Would you please...
Well, did they introduce themselves who's leaving?
Individually, so we'll see.
We're going to have at some point a reading of the names, so that there's more than...
Yes, I wondered if each one of them could introduce themselves. We know, we have had some of you come to the table over the years, and we know you, and some of you we don't see. So I wondered if, I mean, I see Nancy there, I haven't seen you in a long time, but you used to be with us a lot. So, I mean, we're going to miss so many of you.
Yeah.
It's just incredible to me that the talent and the knowledge and the commitment that's going to be lost here. And I know we're going to have wonderful people left, but we have to tell you how much you have meant, not only to the board, but to the people of the state of Michigan. And I hope you know that you are appreciated. But I wondered if all of you could stand up individually and tell us who you are, because we've got the resolutions. We know some of you, but not all. So could we do that?
Sure. Those of you, why don't we do that? Just, we'll start over here, and Kathy's asking to, maybe you're, you know...
What, what you are, your name and your...
I'm Pat Eppert, and I work with the Office of Educational Assessment Accountability. Been here for 31 years.
Wow.
Different programs than you, Anderson.
Thank you, Pat.
I'm La'ami Haddad, with the Office of Professional Education, Early and Early Administration Services, and I've been here 34 years.
I'm Lanann Snowman, currently with the Office of Special Education, always interviewed. I've been in a lot of other units, and I've been here just a little bit over 20 years.
Hi, Mary Alice Galloway, and I have literally worked all over the Department of Education in the 21 years that I have been here and it's been one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm Teresa Abbott, and I work in the Office of Educational Services. I've been here 33 years.
Nancy Minsmoyer, I've been here three and a half years, and started out in the Professional Specials Program and Gifted Education, worked with Madison Science, I'm the HR Director, actually returned from the School Service Division, and has moved to the Department.
Thank you. Sandy, you came in a little late.
Hi, I work the Superintendent's Office. I've been working for the state for 32 years.
Thank you. She's on ice. Oh, Char, of course.
Charlie Merrick, I work in the Superintendent's Office, and I've been here almost 35 years.
A thousand of knowledge.
I've been with the Department for 23 years, most recently in Arts Education, and previously with the King Chavez.
Hi, Bonnie Ross Bell, been here 12 years, currently with the Office of Professional Preparation.
I'm Rosemary Sardini, and I've been with the Department of Education for 30 years, first of all, in higher education, through financial assistance, and most recently with the Child and Adult Youth Program. And prior to the department, I had five years with Northern Michigan University.
Jean, I think you probably heard Dave earlier.
I'm trying. Where's your tissue box?
I know you've avoided this meeting on purpose, but...
Yes, and I didn't bring my Kleenex with me.
I know.
I'm Jean Shane, and I've been with the Department for 22 years. I started out as the non-public homeschool consultant and worked with data issues and publications that were in print, not online. And I'm now with the State with School Report redesign office, but in between I've worked with charter school issues and with teacher recognition. And of course, that's right where my heart is with all that teacher recognition, because we know teachers are the single most important factor influencing student achievement in the classroom. So, thank you very much.
I'm Michelle Ryder. I'm currently in the Office of Professional Preparation, although I've skipped and jumped around the department several times, and I've been here nearly 21 years.
Karen, we see you back here. You can't hide. Come on.
I'm Ken Grandemaker. I've been here for 32 years. I work in Financial Management.
I'm Brenda Zooka. I have been with the Career and Technical Education Office for 32 years.
Thank you. And we've asked all of our folks to join us at the reception because we want to also honor them, along with our two board members that are, that are leaving, or three board members if Reggie gets here. Because when you hear the names and the numbers of years, it's just incredible. And as Kath said, we can't thank you enough for your service to the kids of this state, to the entire citizens of this state, and we'll miss you very much. One more time, can we give them a... Should we move the consent agenda? That's right.
Well, now that we know who they are.
I move the consent agenda, including these resolutions for these wonderful people who we thank for your service.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Any further business?
My husband and one of our daughters came in.
Carolyn, let, a personal privilege that, to put Joe on the spot. Let's go.
There really is a man that was behind me all the way, my husband Joe, and one of our daughters, Chrissy.
We'll adjourn to the reception in honor of not only our board members, but the staff that are leaving, and this is their last meeting. Thanks so much.